Good morning, everyone. We're going to get started. This is a regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, Hamilton County, February 27, 2025. We start our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join us in silent prayer. Amen. Uh-oh. Oh, no.
Oh!
Well, now...
They were at Memorial Hall.
That's right. They were moved. Okay.
We have the imaginary flag.
I don't know what to do. I really don't. We'll just...
A pleasure.
Oh, well, you're the best, Derek.
Okay.
Well, now, who, who? Lesson learned. It's County Engineers providing us with a... You're the best. All right, all right. Now, here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, County Engineer Eric Beck. Always saving the day. I appreciate that. I'm going to make a motion to approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
We have a presentation here, a proclamation honoring Jayla Twitty for celebrating excellence in professional women's rugby. Commissioner Reese, is this your proclamation?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to kick it to you.
Thank you. And I don't have my glasses, so bear with me. We are very excited to honor the first national All-American female in Hamilton County for rugby. And where it goes as follows. Proclamation honoring Jayla A. Twitty, celebrating excellence in professional women's rugby. Whereas women's rugby is on the fastest-growing sports, is one of the fastest-growing sports today in the United States. Jayla Twitty started playing rugby in 2016 as one of the few African-American females in this sport. Whereas Jayla and the rest of the Walnut Hills High School team made up of girls representing Cincinnati Public Schools, private schools, and parochial schools was founded in 2016. This was the first and only girls' high school team in the greater Cincinnati-Hamilton County area. Whereas the Walnut Hills Girls Rugby Team secured three state titles and one state runner-up title in its first four years of competition. Whereas Jayla represented Withrow University High School on that team. Whereas Jayla was nominated for Player of the Year by the Rugby Ohio Coaches Poll in 2018 and 2019. And whereas Jayla was named the first national All-American female in Hamilton County for rugby. After graduating from Withrow High School University in 2019, Jayla went on to play competitive rugby at the collegiate level on various select teams throughout the United States and in the country of Ireland. Jayla is now, uh, let's see, will now, Jayla will now be playing competitively in the integral year of the National Women's Elite Rugby League that is made up of six teams: Boston, New York, Bay Area, Twin Cities, Denver, and Chicago. Over 350 women entered the pool to be recruited for this new league. Many entered, few were selected. Jayla will be playing for the Chicago team, so we can all get there. It's just a little drive up the road. Jayla will be the first female to play professional rugby at the level of, at this level in Hamilton County history. Be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, on behalf of its residents and the entire community, hereby extends its deepest appreciation and heartfelt congratulations to Jayla Twitty for her contributions to the sport of women's rugby in Hamilton County. Be it further proclaimed that we declare today Jayla Twitty Day in all of Hamilton County.
She's here. Thank you. I was unprepared to speak, but I just want to say thank you for the opportunity and thank you for acknowledging me. I will continue to make a lot of strides forward within this sport, not only for myself, but other people from Cincinnati. We had all that success in our first four years, and there's still only one girls' team here in Cincinnati, so hopefully that will change here soon. And when I'm done playing professionally and with all my other opportunities that I will have, I'll be sure to come back and make sure I contribute back to you guys as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't go anywhere. We're going to open it up because we are three women elected to the Hamilton County Commission. And we are always supporting and uplifting and you making this history moment, encouraging some little girl watching you right now who will say, "I can do it." And we've got the top athletes in America right here at Hamilton County, and that's why I really push it for us to be a hub for that.
Yeah, congratulations. First of all, I want to know what position you play?
I don't know if I should say it in the mic. I play hooker.
Oh, all right, all right. That's what they call it.
Yeah.
So my daughter played rugby at OU and went on to play for the Maryland Rugby Team.
Oh, cool.
Right? And so I have a soft spot for rugby, if you can have a soft spot for rugby. But it is one of the most brutal sports I've ever watched, and when she would play, I'd have her call me the next day and say, "Are you injury-free?" And she'd say, "I'm pretty much injury-free" because it's a rough sport.
Lots of bruises.
Yeah, but it's fun. It's so much fun. And I'm so glad to know, I didn't realize that we are only one team here in Hamilton County. So congratulations on your achievement. We are happy to celebrate you and the rest of the team as you are bringing this sport to other young girls in Hamilton County. And so much success in your future, and we'll be thrilled to track your progress. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Congratulations. I would love to see you out on the field. I'm looking at you, and I'm seeing Ron, and I'm seeing Amber. So what's the relationship?
Amber's my mother, and Ron's my papa.
Okay, okay. And I know they're very proud of you, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to come down and take a picture. I don't know, is your mom here, Amber Twitty?
My sister's here.
Your sister's here. Okay, she could come up too. And I do want to thank, your mom brought you to our attention, so thank you so much.
All right, make some smiles. Thank you all for being here. I do want to say that when my daughter played rugby at OU, she played for four years, and we had a mother-daughter weekend. And I told her, "Why don't we have a mother-daughter rugby game?" And she said, "Are you nuts?" And I'm like, "Oh, is it..." And I was familiar with the sport. I said, "Don't you think we could do like a tag?" So she's like, "No." I'm like, "Okay, never mind." So anyways, congratulations again. That's really exciting. All right, are there any public comments?
Well, I have a presentation today.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, we'll do it that way.
Are there any comments from the internet or anybody? Okay, very good. All right, yeah, let's move on to comments and motions. Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Thank you so much. Since we're presenting and meeting new people, I'd like to, you know, we have once a month where we talk about the Inspire Initiative. And so we have Dr. Katrina Weisch, who is here. Love You to Life is the name of her program, and she receives funds from Hamilton County. And so Alice, would you like to come up with Dr. Weisch?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I'm excited today to present to you Dr. Katrina Weisch. She is doing some amazing things with young ladies, and I'll let her go ahead and tell you more about it. But she has a presentation. I'll let you come to the mic. Okay.
Okay, thank you so much. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioner Treehouse, Alicia Reese, Commissioner Reese and Commissioner Summer Adumas. I truly appreciate being here today, so thank you. It's such an honor. Just a little bit about myself. My name is Dr. Katrina Weisch. I have been working in a behavioral health, mental health space for over 25 years. I know, I look like I'm about 25. But I have two wonderful children who are 28 and 22, and two grandchildren who are five and six. And I do this work on behalf of the youth and especially, you know, my lineage that are now coming up in this world. But you can go ahead and start. So we did receive a grant through the Inspiring Youth Grant, which was very much appreciated. We were able to do the Poised Perfection Brunch for young ladies going back to school in August. With this brunch, we were able to provide young ladies with four different workshops. So they had a workshop on leadership presence. We also had a workshop on healthy relationships, positive self-esteem, and maintaining mental health and wellness. Those young ladies that attended the brunch, we had probably about 25 young ladies that attended, and their parents decided to stay. So we had a total of like 40 women that were in the room that had a wonderful time working with one another and learning. So even the women, the mothers that stayed, they learned something new too at the same time. And that have been continuously receiving feedback from the young ladies and from the women on what they learned as far as healthy relationships, mental health, and wellness. And making sure that they maintain positive relationships overall with their self-esteem. One of the things that came out of this brunch was that the young ladies were able to, who needed it, they were able to receive mental health services if they were underinsured or non-insured. So, which was a very huge blessing for me to be able to provide that to the young ladies. As a part of Love You to Life, in addition to providing mental health information and breaking that stigma on mental health, we do provide scholarships for young people to go back to school. So it doesn't have to be a young lady, but it can be any male or female that receives scholarships to go back to school as well as stipends if people need to get mental health services if they're underinsured or non-insured. With our grant, we were able to provide the information to get it out there to young people to kind of connect to the resources that are available in the community. So that was our project that we did, and I'm very excited that we were able to do that for our young ladies.
High School University in 2019, Jayla went on to play competitive rugby at the collegiate level on various select teams throughout the United States and in the country of Ireland. Jayla is now, uh, let's see, will now, Jayla will now be playing competitively in the integral year of the National Women's Elite Rugby League that is made up of six teams, Boston, New York, Bay Area, Twin Cities, Denver, and Chicago. Over 350 women entered the pool to be recruited for this new league. Many entered, few were selected. Jayla will be playing for the Chicago team so we can all get there. It's just a little drive up the road. Jayla will be the first female to play professional rugby at the level of, at this level in Hamilton County history. Be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners on behalf of its residents and the entire community hereby extends its deepest appreciation and heartfelt congratulations to Jayla Twitty for her contributions to the sport of women's rugby in Hamilton County. Be it further proclaimed that we declare today Jayla Twitty Day in All of Hamilton County.
I was unprepared to speak, but um, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity and thank you for acknowledging me. I will continue to um, make a lot of strides forward within this sport, not only for myself, but other people from Cincinnati. We had all that success in our first four years and there's still only one girls team here in Cincinnati, so hopefully that will change here soon. And when I'm done playing professionally and with all my other opportunities that I will have, I'll be sure to come back and make sure I contribute back to you guys as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't go anywhere, we're gonna open it up because we are three women elected to the Hamilton County Commission and uh, we are always uh, supporting and uplifting and you making this history moment, encouraging some little girl watching you right now uh, who will say, "I can do it." And I, we've got the top athletes in America right here at Hamilton County and that's why I really push it for us to be a, a hub for that. And I'll open it up, but.
Yeah, congratulations. Uh, first of all, I want to know what position you play?
I don't know if I should say it in the mic, I play hooker.
Oh, alright, alright, that, that's what they call it.
Yeah.
So my daughter played rugby at OU and went on to play for the Maryland rugby team.
Oh, cool.
Right? And so uh, I have a soft spot for rugby, if you can have a soft, soft spot for rugby. But it is one of the most brutal sports I've ever watched and when she would play, I'd have her call me the next day and say, "Are you injury free?" And she'd say, "I'm pretty much injury free because it's a rough sport."
Lots of bruises.
Yeah, but it's fun, it's so much fun and I'm so glad to know, I didn't realize that we are only one team here in Hamilton County. So uh, congratulations on your achievement. Uh, we are happy to celebrate you and the rest of the team as you are bringing this sport to other young girls in Hamilton County and um, so much success in your future and we'll be thrilled to track your progress. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Congratulations. I would love to see you out on the field. Um, I'm looking at you and I'm seeing Ron and I'm seeing Amber, so what's the relationship?
Amber's my mother and Ron's my papa.
Okay, okay. And I know they're very proud of you, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're gonna come down and take a picture. I don't know, is um, is your mom here, Amber, Twitty?
No, but my sister's here and I have family here.
Okay, she could come up too and, and I do want to thank uh, your mom brought you to our attention, so thank you so much.
Thank you all for being here. Um, I do want to say that when, when my daughter played rugby at OU, she played for four years and we had a mother-daughter weekend and I told her, "Why don't we have a mother-daughter rugby game?" And she said, "Are you nuts?" And I'm like, "Oh, is it?" And, and I, I was familiar with the sport. I said, "Don't you think we could do like a tag?" So she's like, "No." I'm like, "Okay, never mind." So anyways, congratulations again, that's really exciting. Um, alright, are there any public comments?
Well, I have a presentation today.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, okay, we'll do it that way.
Are there any comments from the internet or anybody? Okay, very good. Alright, yeah, let's move on to comments and motions, Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Thank you so much. Um, since we're presenting and meeting new people, I'd like to, you know, we have once a month where we talk about the Inspire Initiative and so we have Dr. Katrina Weish who is here. Love You to Life is the name of her program and she received funds from um, Hamilton County. And so Alice, would you like to come up with uh, Dr. Weish?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Um, I'm excited today to present to you Dr. Katrina Weish. She um, is doing some amazing things with young ladies and um, I'll let her go ahead and tell you more about it. But she has a presentation, I'll let you come to the mic.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much. Good morning, commissioners, good morning. Um, Commissioner Drehouse, Alicia Reese, Commissioner Reese, and Commissioner Summer O'Dumas. Um, I truly appreciate being here today, so thank you, it's such an honor. Um, just a little bit about myself, my name is Dr. Katrina Weish. I have been working in a behavioral health, mental health space for over 25 years. I know, I look like I'm about 25. But I have two wonderful children who are 28 and 22 and two grandchildren who are five and six and I do this work on behalf of the youth and especially, you know, my lineage that are now coming up in this world. Uh, but you can go ahead and, and start. So um, we did receive a um, grant through the Inspiring Youth Grant which was um, very much appreciated. We were able to do the Poised Perfection Brunch for Young Ladies going back to school um, in August. With this brunch, we were able to um, provide young ladies with four different workshops. So they had a workshop on um, leadership presence. We also had a workshop on um, healthy relationships, um, positive self-esteem and um, maintaining mental health and wellness. Those young ladies that attended the brunch, we had probably about 25 young ladies that attended and their parents decided to stay, so we had a total of like 40 women that were in the room that had a wonderful time um, working with one another and learning. So even the women, the mothers that stayed, they learned something new too at the same time. Um, and that have been continuously receiving feedback from the young ladies and from the women on what they learned as far as healthy relationships, mental health and wellness and making sure that they um, maintain um, positive relationships overall um, with their self-esteem. One of the things that came out of this um, brunch was that the young ladies were able to, um, who needed it? They were able to receive mental health services, um, if they were underinsured or non-insured. So uh, which was a very huge blessing for me to be able to um, provide that to the young ladies. As a part of Love You to Life, in addition to providing mental health information and breaking that stigma on mental health, we do um, provide scholarships for young people to go back to school, so it doesn't have to be a young lady, but um, it can be any male or female that'll receive scholarships to go back to school as well as stipends if people need to get mental health services if they're underinsured or non-insured. Um, with our, with our grant, we were able to provide the information to get it out there to young people to kind of connect to the resources that are available in the community. So that was our project that we did and I'm very excited that we were able to do that for our young ladies and for Hamilton County.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You can stay up here, you're not done yet, but I, I thank you, the program is just, sounds awesome. And I was looking at the zip codes that you served and the diversity of people, uh, young people that you reached, so that's awesome. So we'll open it up.
Yeah, thank, thank you. I just want to thank you for the work you're doing. It's so important to lift up the voices of women and girls in our community, so thank you for what you're doing. Commissioner Reese?
Yeah, I just want to echo that. Thank you for what you're doing at the ground level to help young women to understand leadership and help move them forward. I mean, we're in a time right now where uh, confidence boosting is so important, uh, but not just confidence, but a roadmap and your program provides a roadmap to uh, young girls who will become women and fierce leaders in their own right. So thank you very much for that and thank you Commissioner O'Dumas for bringing it up.
Okay. I have some information here. Um, yeah, can we grab her?
We know she didn't get the elevator yet because it takes a long time to get the elevator.
Yeah, we know you can get on the website.
Unless she's on the steps, she's still in the lobby. There she is. No, you're fine.
Someone asked about how they can contact you.
So I could be contacted at um, I get to lift the mic.
Okay.
Normally gotta lay it down. But I could be contacted at um, 513-580-3200 or my email address is loveyou, L-O-V-E, the letter U, the number 2, dot life@outlook.com.
Great. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you for coming.
Alright, um, we have a public hearing today at 10:15, so we're gonna move to that and then finish our comments after the public hearing. So Engineer Beck is here to talk about our sidewalk hearing.
Good morning. This is a public hearing for the Sidewalk Repair Replacement Program um, in various townships in the county. Um, inspection letters for repairs were sent out in Sept- September and October of '24. Property owners were given 90 days to uh, to secure a permit and do the work themselves if they did not. We included it in this package for the, the bids. Um, hearing notification letters were sent out in January for the two hearings. This is the second scheduled hearing. This hearing affords the property owners the opportunity to speak about the quantities and the costs of the repairs on their property. Procedurally, once contractors completed the repairs, the property owners are given 60 days to pay the bill in full. Uh, property owners are also provided an opportunity to pay early and receive a discount. Um, the average cost per square foot is $21 and uh, we include a 10% administrative cost when we do the project. Now, the remaining costs, if they have not been paid, will be uh, placed on their property tax uh, as a sidewalk assessment and depending on the dollar amount that it's due, it'll be either be a three, five, or 10 year assessment. So this is the opportunity for anybody to speak about those costs.
Is there anyone here to comment during this hearing? Going once, going twice? Okay, I do have a question for you, Eric. Um, do you have any idea what the average cost for, per homeowner is? Is there an average cost?
It's normally less than a thousand dollars. It is, you know, this works out to about $300 per four foot square of sidewalk. Normally it's one or two squares per property that needs to be repaired.
Okay.
So it's typically a small amount, most of, I think last year our average was around $800 per property owner.
And I ask because people's property taxes have just gone up in many cases and there's a lot of, a lot of folks struggling. Um, can you help us then also understand how you identify the sidewalks that need to be replaced?
Of course. Yeah, we, we split the, all of the sidewalks up within the county over a five-year period, so once every five years, each area is inspected. Anything that has over a one inch would, would be a tripping hazard or cracks in it, we identify those and those are the ones that need to be replaced. So once every five years, the sidewalk in front of your, your parcel would be inspected.
And is, tell, generally, is it anything in particular that causes the damage to the sidewalks?
Typically, trees, tree roots, um, drainage problems where water gets underneath and causes it to crack. Um, lots of salt being put on sidewalks will cause the, it deterioration over time.
Okay.
The good thing though, that the one thing advantage to this is the property owner gets the benefit of a better cost because of the quantity we're bidding out at one time. You know, as opposed to having a contractor come out and just do your house. We have a large quantity in here so they can get better unit costs.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Thank you so much, uh, no questions.
Okay, Commissioner Reese?
Uh, I don't have any question, but I do want to piggyback on that because uh, I've always been concerned about costs and what's happening and, you know, price of eggs is jumping out the roof. Uh, at the same time, I am also concerned that people are losing their jobs. Many people are losing federal jobs, et cetera. So there's more people losing jobs than will lose jobs and I just want to make sure that we're, uh, if there's any leniency or, or if there needs to be a delay on something, uh, I, you know, they just can't afford one more thing where they might have before, but now folks are scared if they're gonna.
If, if it is a cost issue and they come to us, we, we can, it, we can help eliminate a safety issue. I mean, that's the reason we're doing it is because it's a safety issue and we do need to take care of safety issues.
Yeah, no, I understand. I want a balance between safety and safety net at the same time.
We do not replace anything that does, or repair anything that does not require it. Yes. So we do try to keep it to a minimum.
Thank you, thank you. Um, at this point, I'm gonna make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse? Yes. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Thank you. We'll bring, we'll be bringing the bids back to you in April to authorize it to go out to bid.
Thank you. Um, I neglected as usual to have everybody introduce themselves on the dais. So Kristy, we're gonna do that right now.
Kristy Rischel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summer O'Dumas, Commissioner.
Hamilton County Commissioner Alicia Reese.
Holly Christman, Assistant County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
I'm Commissioner Denise Drehouse and I did that for your benefit, Holly, because at some point we're gonna turn it to you and people are gonna say, "Where's Jeff Aluta?" Um, alright, let's go back to comments. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas, do you have any comments or presentations?
I have lots of comments. Okay, so uh, I'm feeling a little funny, is it, I just don't feel too good, so if I, not like, not like that, but it's just, you know, so anyway, no, no, no.
Where's the mask?
But anyway, no, not that kind of.
Oh, alright, alright. I just.
Yeah. But anyway, for my events from, and maybe I should have shared it, I thought I could share. But anyway, February the 20th through uh, February 27th, I just have a few things to say. We had our um, Black History Month honors and that was awesome. We, um, my office honored four great people, um, and so I'm glad we were able to do that. We had the delegation luncheon, um, and the delegates who came down, I think we got more done than usual. Usually we'll only, only cover maybe two subjects, but we were able to cover the majority of what we were trying to, to cover, so. And then we had the staff meeting where the topic of the staff meeting that we had here was uh, the incident in uh, Evendale and Lincoln Heights, so I thought that was, I thought it was productive. We'll see as investigations go on. And then yesterday I went to the Ally, Aloy Economic Development Luncheon uh, for the Achievement Awards and I thought it was a, a great opportunity to see what Aloy is doing. And also I want to compliment Julie Calvert, who was the keynote speaker who brought up about the incident in Evendale and Lincoln Heights and I mean, I think she might have taken a chance by, as an organization, speaking out about we are not going to tolerate hate. And I, I told her, everybody should do that. I was just, uh, I'll talk about that in a minute, but I just was glad that she stood strong and firm about it. And also our president, um, Commissioner Drehouse brought it up at her State of uh, of the county address and I thought that was, was great. Um, and that was my next thing, the State of the County Address last night, I thought it was excellent. Um, I was, we have done as a board so many great things and I am so proud to be a part of it. And then Jobs, Ohio, we had a board meeting, a quarterly board meeting. So lastly, um, this is the last time we'll be meeting uh, for Black History Month and I think um, there's just a few things that I wanted to say. Um, the Nazi incident that we talked about and people keep saying, "Why do you keep talking about it?" Because it's still going on. You know, it hasn't stopped uh, from almost two weeks ago. People are still coming through Lincoln Heights with flyers and, and everything else. So um, I don't know when we'll stop talking about it. But I do know, uh, when I talk about other organizations, businesses that have not even mentioned it, um, I think about what Martin Luther King Jr. said, and it's appropriate with Black History Month or not. And I thought about it this morning, when it comes down to it, we won't remember the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends. So I'm just wondering why all these great organizations, I won't name any because I could, um, why they're not saying anything? Why is it just up to us? Why is it just up to the Lincoln Heights residents to speak about it? Why is it just up to Julie Calvert to speak about it? And to be honest, I'm a little surprised at some of the organizations that say they emphasize and encourage diversity and all of that, that hate is not okay. And even during the State of the County Address, I noticed when President Drehouse said, "We are not having this in Hamilton County," and people clapped, but a lot of them did not clap. Now, maybe they didn't hear her, maybe they don't like clapping and, I don't know, but I'm not here to judge, but I was concerned about that. And so when we talk about it, I'm gonna bring up my favorite uh, man again, Martin Luther King Jr. This morning, I, I looked it up to make sure I said it right, but it's very simple. I really like people that can say really brilliant um, things in just a sentence or a paragraph that really, and I'm working toward that myself, but says injustice anywhere is injustice everywhere. So don't think because it happened there, it won't happen in your neighborhood. So we need to get more active just as a county, um, and just speak out against hatred. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Thank you. Um, I want to also congratulate uh, you, President Drehouse, on uh, a very good State of the County and uh, happy that you highlighted a lot of the stuff that our board has done and many of us, uh, it's only three of us and we have a very big county. 49 municipalities and each of us have taken different initiatives and that's how we can get things done. Um, and so I was very happy uh, to see that those things were highlighted. Uh, I wanted to also say that one of the things that was also highlighted, uh, that we all have talked about is affordable housing, affordable housing. And we don't just talk about it, our board put, we had a choice, where to put the $158 million uh, American Rescue money and we kept saying this is a one-time opportunity. And I think people now see what's happening in Washington, we were, we were telling the truth. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity because now, coming from Washington, they're cutting money in terms of helping people. They're cutting jobs. We were on the cutting edge of making investments that were both short-term in terms of what I call right now help and we also had some long-term investments. And so affordable housing, we up to about 60 million, that's just with the ARPA money, that doesn't include the dollars that we have leveraged with HUD and I was happy to hear you mention that. Uh, I was excited to represent the board at uh, another ribbon cutting at the Vandelia Point Ribbon Cutting in Northside. Uh, and the county invested $2.7 million. They're gonna have about 52 new units for the residents in a whole new community. Now, that project could not have gone forward because a lot of these projects needed gap financing, gap money and through our investment with CDF, we were able to close that gap and have an actual opening. The gentleman that um, spoke, who moved in there, talks about how he came from the bottom, he doesn't want a handout. He even said that, he lived in his car and then he worked and worked until he, and he was working until he could get a room. And now he's gone from a room to now having his own apartment. This is the kind of stuff that we've been talking about and our board, I feel, has been very bold. Not bold in just uh, what we say, but bold in our budget and where we have invested. So I was very happy to represent the board there. Uh, in addition, I attended, uh, as we had the Black History Program here and we've honored a lot of great people, I was happy to uh, be invited to Norwood City Council, uh, Councilwoman Susan Hoover, where I was able to present uh, our proclamation again during their Black History Celebration and Women's Celebration, because actually March 1st will be her day. And so I was happy to be there uh, at Norwood City Council, not only with the proclamation, but also talked about all those things that we have invested in Norwood. We've invested in stormwater, we invested in economic development. Um, and then I spent a lot of money in Norwood. By the way, I told them, "You guys keep taking my money." Um, but that was just great and I appreciate the, the invitation to, to be there and represent our board and present the proclamation. Um, it was mentioned earlier, the delegate, delegation luncheon and that's what we have each year. I want to say Anson Turley did a great job and of course, uh, all of the administration, but I think he was uh, uh, that was his assignment to pull everybody together and uh, we had, there were a couple people missing from the delegation. These are all the state reps and the state senators who represent this area that the voters voted for. And I want to just say that we put a lot of things on the table, but I want to highlight one thing we definitely put on the table was the high property taxes. People are not happy about these high property taxes. Uh, one of the things, we can't say we're for affordable housing and people can't afford the house they already have. So we put on the table that you guys have to come up with something. We put on the table, do you have something that would freeze property taxes for senior citizens? Do you have something on the table that will uh, can we re, can we do something with the reevaluations? And uh, they, I want to tell you, unfortunately, they still seem as though uh, they're not heading toward anything uh, meaningful, but we still are hopeful. But I want you to know that we, as the board, put it on the table, front and center on behalf of the taxpayers of Hamilton County. Um, also, uh, we talked about the, the proposal that the governor has, talking about using the sports betting tax. Now, that was one of the ideas I think birthed out of Hamilton County where we met with the governor, it was presented. And we appreciate the governor going back and putting it in his budget, uh, while, you know, we know that the legislature will do what they need to do. One of the things though, uh, was mentioned and I want to make sure I'm absolutely clear, uh, we do not want to just advocate for this, these dollars and have a loophole where the Bengals can go and get the money. So they go with us to advocate and we don't have a lease. The lease has to be, we just gotta do the hard work. And it's an upside-down lease and I'm not in favor of going together to Columbus, but we don't have a lease. Because everything in the lease, i- i- everything, everything, I mean, they covered everything in this lease. I mean, everything from management to advertising to the, the, the walls, if we put some walls outside, they control it. If we manage, we want to have events, they control it. Everything is controlled, no rent paid. I mean, it's, it's crazy. So we're the only ones in. controlled, no rent paid. I mean, it's crazy. So we're the only ones in the state that has that lease. We're the only ones in the country that has that lease. So we want to have this money in the budget because it is an opportunity. But it ain't an opportunity if the taxpayers still get screwed because they got a bad lease. So we expressed that. And I'm hopeful that the legislature, when they do what they do, that they put something in there that teams can't just go unilaterally and get the money, just like they went unilaterally, the Bengals that got in the budget that we didn't agree to, where they're exempt from paying the sales tax on the improvements that they're doing. Well, we pay for the stadium with the sales tax. So if the citizens can't get exempt, why would they be exempt and then benefit from a stadium that's paid for by the sales tax? So I want to put that out there to our legislators that are out there. It's not just getting the money. It's making sure that the taxpayers, that there is no loophole where they would get screwed in the bottom. And I'm just going to put it out there with me. I'm not in favor of going to the state together, and we haven't sat down and got this lease together. That's where I'm coming from. So wanted to put that out there because I know people, I want to stay as transparent on this particular issue as possible. And our board has done that by having public meetings, and will hopefully continue to do that. The other thing that I wanted to highlight, I wanted to talk about real quick, when we got the engineer, he'll be coming back up. But I wanted, Mr. Engineer, the potholes. And I know the engineer is independently elected, but I want to say that I don't want to just talk about the potholes. I want to see if we can work together to have some kind of task force for potholes. These aren't just any potholes. I mean, these things are, we just talked about safety. I think the most safety issue on the streets driving is the potholes. Even someone from my office swerved a pothole, and it was not in Cincinnati, and went into a ditch. So I know that Cincinnati has a 3-1-1 if you live in Cincinnati, and that's reporting after you done hit the pothole. But we, what do we have in those areas that's not in the city? So I think we need a countywide pothole strike force. And let me say that my idea, they always might say, sound crazy, but I think it's the right thing. We should work with our small business, office of small business. We should have a strike force that only deals with potholes. And we can get small businesses contracted, a man in a truck with the right equipment, and they can fill potholes only, and then our other people can focus on whatever they've been focusing on. And this group, their job is to get out here and fill these potholes. And we should have a 60-day plan of filling potholes, not just endless. And I've also mentioned the salt. See, people saying, maybe it's the salt, maybe it's this. Now, they're going to say it was cold, and we didn't have rain and cold, but then I done checked with the weather man, the weather people, and this is not the coldest it's ever been in Hamilton County. And they have been other times. So I just think, one of the things I tell my colleagues, I want to work with the engineer and administrator when he gets back, is I want a pothole strike force. Now, people are going to say, well, how would you, how would you fund that? Well, we have interest funds that we haven't spent, because we're going to spend it on having a, we were going to spend it with FC if they got the women's franchise. We never did. It's $5 million. We don't need $5 million. But I want the one man with the truck who's got a small business to be a part of the strike force, to fill these potholes and incentivize it, to fill the potholes, under the guidance, of course, of what the engineer's specs are, what have you. So not just the engineer, because they got a lot of jurisdictions, but to some people, they just say, I live in Hamilton County, and this place is, I mean, this feel like Detroit, Chicago, and all that, where they tear up your cars. And so I just want to work with the engineer, work with whoever, but we need a pothole strike force with small businesses and incentivize filling these holes in the next 60 days. And this is from the complaints and the people and the citizens and the taxpayers who have contacted me, and I know they've contacted others as well. But I want to see some action on these potholes. With that being said, the last thing is my 14, the 14-day report. I want to thank my colleagues. I want to thank the administration pulled together, Evendale, Lincoln Heights, the Police Department, the Sheriff Department, Emergency Management, Prosecutor's Office, all together, all together. That was huge. That was huge. And then our commissioners, the questions y'all gave us, we gave to them. We didn't censor them. We did, all the videos y'all gave, we gave to the administrator. They pulled it together. Now, did you get all the answers you wanted? Maybe you did. I didn't get all the answers I wanted. There's still our questions. But because I think of the board, what we've done, people know that this is not going away. At Lincoln Heights, we didn't just make a statement. You know, some people, I might have stated, love versus hate. Let me just say, this is justice. This is a safety issue. Lincoln Heights is unsafe right now. They running there with the KKK flyers. The KKK got an anniversary coming up. We can't have a celebration in our county. Take it somewhere else. And we got to make it hot. I want it hot. But they say, hot on the block? Hot. When you come here, it's so hot. They say, man, don't go there. We need to set up tents somewhere else. And so I just want to thank them. We gave a written report to the people, but we also gave some action steps. And I just wanted to highlight those, so that people didn't just come and yell. And we're not the only solution. We went as far as we can go. We're independently elected. The prosecutor's independently elected. The sheriff's independently elected. So we can only go, we can, they don't have to work with us. We appreciate them working with us. But with that being said, one is we got EMA. We said, hey, they need an alert system in Lincoln Heights immediately because they got the KKK flyers flying everywhere. They've got threat of some other things possibly happening. So Nick Crossley reported that they're meeting Friday, and they'll hopefully be up by next week in Lincoln Heights. That's action. Number two, all the people said they saw it, they were there, but there has been no statements taken. Usually, when there's a situation, they say, we got to file a police report. No police reports were filed. So I said, let's have that. I understand that Pastor Julian Cook of Lincoln Heights Baptist, they said in March, I guess they're working with the prosecutor and the sheriff's office, they'll be at Lincoln Heights. And people, if you saw someone, they say, if you see something, say something. If you saw something, say something. And they'll be there to help you fill out your statement. So the statements are on record and turned over to the police and the prosecutor's office. The third thing that we said was that we, the prosecutor has said, they are, even though Evendale hired some people without, unfortunately, Lincoln Heights knowing about it, the prosecutor has her own investigation team. And so she will be involved. So we got the prosecutor to say they're going to investigate the situation. So those are some things that I think were good that came out of this meeting and some action steps. Now, they're still, we're not the end-all. There's some others. And as Commissioner Dumas said, others need to step up. Can't just be us. Others have to, this is the whole county. And everybody has to be all hands on deck. GE's got to step up. They're a corporate community. They're out there. They're in the corporate community. They got to step up. They can't just sit there and be quiet. So you're right about everybody stepping up. And I don't want you just to make no statement, just like they had that little black box back in the day. Everybody went on social media and said, let's go with a black box on social media. And the black box, now all of them are backing off the black box. We don't want a black box. We want you to stand up and say, hey, we don't want it at GE. We don't want it in Lincoln Heights. We don't want it in Evendale. We don't want it in Locklear. Bottom line, we don't want it in Hamilton County. Find some other place to go. So those are some action steps. The last thing, though, Holly, as you are our Assistant Administrator, that I did not bring up to my colleagues, that I think we should bring up, involve the dog warden should be pulled into the investigation. The service dog, according to the videos and according to the mayor of Evendale, who they were trying to protect. First of all, no service dog should be pushed into this type of hatred. I mean, who would do that to a dog, to make the dog be doing something like this? But the second thing is, they left the dog in the car. And I don't know the laws, but the dog was left in the car. I don't know if the windows was up, but there's got to be some laws about dog abuse. So the last part I wanted to bring in is the dog warden. She'll get to the bottom of it, to find out where any law is broken in animal abuse with the dog left in the car, with the windows, I believe, that were up. My understanding, as a person who did leave the dog, did file a police report on the vehicle. So I'm sure they can find their name and address and phone number. So that's the only thing that I did have, is that I'd like to have the dog warden involved. And then lastly, I asked for the sheriffs, all the people to please communicate with Lincoln Heights. And we also need the fire department involved, as well as check on the fire hydrants, to make sure all fire hydrants are working. We don't want a California situation. So that's all that I have. And I want to thank my colleagues, because I think we really brought people together. So thank you.
Thank you. I will follow on, on both comments related to Lincoln Heights. I too thought the meeting was productive. I thank the prosecutor, the folks from Lincoln Heights, including the Heights Movement and the mayor for speaking, and the sheriff and the folks from Evendale for all coming here so we can get a common understanding of what happened and try to think about how we can move forward. And we were told a lot about what had happened, but also the investigations that are being done, the independent investigations. So we will track that and make sure that once those investigations are concluded, we get a report back, an update for the county commissioners. I too was encouraged that the prosecutor is now going to interview the folks from Lincoln Heights who are eyewitness to the event, to make sure that their perspective is part of her investigation. So more to come on that. And thank you to those that came in here. The room was full. There's a lot of interest in this. And as both commissioners have said, it's, it's an ongoing situation here, and we are going to make sure it remains top of mind. I was going to also talk about the delegation lunch, thank Anson Turley for pulling it together. There was a lot of conversation about a lot of different issues with the delegation, but thanks to the state reps and state senators, they were able to come. And also, CCAO sent a rep down to participate in that meeting. I was at the library breakfast in Forest Park. This was for elected officials. I represented the commission up there. It is a beautiful facility up in Forest Park. I'm looking at you, Bobby. That was, that's a nice facility up there. And it's, and it's new. And so it's not a renovation. So you get an idea of if the library could do what it needs to do to provide the best service they can, that's the facility, because they built it new. And it's really impressive. And there were tons of people going through. Their numbers are hitting through the roof. So I was really excited for the community of Forest Park and for the library for getting that online. I spoke at the Aloy Lunch. You know, Aloy oftentimes is kind of a sleeper, but they are doing so much to support small businesses through the small business, through Greg Forte and his office, but also through the loans and the coaching and the incubator in Norwood. They are just doing such a great job. They've been doing this for years, and I think sometimes they fly a little under the radar. So I was happy to celebrate them at their lunch yesterday, I believe that was. And then I too was going to mention the State of the County. Thanks to those that could attend. I really appreciated the support. And I was, I was very interested to let people know what the county is doing. And we hit it on all cylinders, including some of the more mundane things we do related to stormwater and sewers, but also some of the more exciting projects that we've got coming online. So thanks to those who were there. I did want to mention that Jeff Aludo is not here today because he's receiving an award in Columbus for his leadership. And so congratulations to Jeff. We shouted him out last night, but it goes without saying that we've got policy direction that comes from this board, but the administration is the one that implements that policy direction. So big thanks to Jeff Aludo, Holly Crispin, and everybody else on the team. Really appreciate all the work that you do on a daily basis to move this agenda forward. So with that, I am going to-
Commissioner Dumas? I mean, sorry, President Dreehouse.
I'm sorry. I forgot. I don't, I can't see without my glasses, though. It's real bad. I forgot to say, we do have a 513 relief bus out there right now, which I got to run to. But it's a kickoff for the 2025 season, and it's all things Hamilton County. It's at Woodland Recreation. They're going to be there till 2:00 PM today, and they got everything from free birth certificates, signing up for the kinship program. But they're going to do a lung cancer screening there today. So that's a new thing. And free gla, I guess I need to go out there. Reading glasses will be given away. Maybe that's why I don't have my glasses. But they're going to have free glasses and all those kind of things. So just wanted to let people know. I forgot to say that, and I apologize.
Thank you. And honestly, while we're on announcements, the Pay Equity Pledge is coming up. The Commission on Women and Girls has a Pay Equity Pledge signing every year. We are still looking for employers to sign on this year. So if you're an employer and you're listening and you would like to sign on to the county's Pay Equity Pledge, I believe the date is March 5th. It's in the afternoon at Memorial Hall. That it's literally a signing, like a college signing, so we can celebrate those employers that are committed to pay equity. So please contact my office or Mary Mountie at the Administration Office to get details related to the participation. Really appreciate all the support we've received so far. Okay.
Since we're doing-
Yes. I saw you looking my way.
Okay. I just have one additional comment. Commissioner Reese brought up about the Bengals, and I was hoping nobody would talk about the Bengals, so I need to. So for 2024, there's a Bleacher Report that came out, Bleacher Report by the National Football League Player Association. Take a look at it for 2024. They were, when the Bengals were surveyed compared to other national football leagues, they did not do well in any area. But specifically, the food for the players, like when the players come in on their own and they want to practice or whatever, there's no food. I know they did upgrade the locker after, we talked about it a little bit. So they got a lot of Fs, but I never knew you could get a F minus. So this time, they got a F minus on how they treat the players' families and visitor, players' families. So it really makes me think, I mean, do we keep a team here that doesn't care about their players or, and it seems like they don't care about our residents because of the possibility of wanting to maintain that same lease? So I just had to bring it up, and you can look at it more. The report is not good. So that's all. No, you wanted to hear that.
Yeah, thank you. I do believe, I think the players were the ones that responded to that survey.
Uh huh. They did.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Holly Crispin, the Assistant County Administrator, is going to, oh, offer comments. Do you have any comments? Just a couple.
Okay, good. Yep. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. Just two quick things. In Jeff's absence, which I love to do as much, I think, as Jeff does, I got to welcome, I think, 11 new employees to the county today. I think 10 of which are at JFS, so they had a big crew today. And also, Commissioner Reese, your new member of your team, Jackie Taggart. So it was nice to have some one-on-one time with her this morning. And secondly, I did want to congratulate the Planning and Development Department, as the board was presented a couple of weeks ago on their digital permitting. They officially went live last week, and things seem to be settling in. So that was a big lift for that team, including KJIS, as well as the Planning and Development staff. So good work to them.
Good news. Yeah, thank you. All right. We are going to move to the regular agenda items. The engineer is going to come forward again and walk us through items one and two.
Good morning again. Just two items today. And Commissioner Dumas, this should make you happy. There's no cost involved in either one. Item number one is a resolution authorizing the county engineer to prepare and submit fiscal year 2026 Ohio Public Works Commission applications and execute agreements as required. This is for the Fields Zertle intersection improvements at McCauley and Conray Roads. Our current estimate is about $7.8 million. We currently have secured an OKI grant for $6.1 million. We're going to apply for OPWC grant for the balance, the 1.7 million. Hopefully, we can get that, and that project would then be 100% funded by other monies. Item number two is a resolution designating a federal public assistance authorized agent for the Hamilton County Engineers Office for a flood mitigation assistance grant for fiscal year 2023 for the Wesselman Road Project. We would like to designate our agent as would be my Deputy Engineer Todd Gadberry, who handles our planning and our construction. The total project of this cost is $450,000. We're able to get an FMA grant of $337,500. In addition to that, a management cost grant of $16,807. In addition to that, a management cost grant of $16,870. This is for Wesselman Road where there's a lot of landslides and typically due to flooding. So this will hopefully help that area. And we will also shortly have one for Round Bottom Road that we're still working on paperwork for.
All right, thank you very much. I too noted the zeros under both of these items. So, you know, it can't be said enough, thank you for looking to different revenue sources outside just what the county taxpayers provide to support these projects. These are big dollar projects and they're going to have a huge impact.
Yes, and this is the way we can get them done.
Thank you. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
I agree, thank you.
Commissioner Reese?
I agree. First of all, and thank you because I know you're very aggressive in trying to get grants for Hamilton County. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I'm going to move to, we approve of items one and two.
Second, Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, let's move into the consent agenda items. Holly Crispin?
Yes, thank you. Item number three on your consent agenda is a budget adjustment for the Emergency Management Agency. This is appropriating $1.3 million for an emergency operations center grant that was received through Ohio EMA to help fund our emergency operations center operations. EMA is matching one-third of the grant award, so $1 million grant plus roughly $300,000 in match. Item number four is a resolution authorizing an amendment with Trivium Interactive for the new inductees into the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame for all the interactive elements. That amount is $149,120. Item number five is a resolution accepting sales tax and late charges for several departments and executing the release of those funds in the amount of $124.92. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the award of an invitation to bid ITB 006-25 and executing an agreement with Browning Chapman for canopy level seating restoration on behalf of stadia and parking. This is $200,525 coming out of Paycor Stadium, the Paycor Capital Fund. Under economic development, item number seven is a resolution authorizing a renewal to the development services agreement with the port in the amount of $800,000 for them. This is for operational costs for them to do some of our economic development real estate work. Item number eight is under the hospital commission. This is a resolution authorizing the board to approve the issuance of hospital facility revenue bonds of Allen County, Ohio. So if you don't mind, I'll just pause for a second and explain this a second. So the board may be aware, the hospital commission lends our tax exempt bond status to healthcare entities to finance improvements to local healthcare facilities. This is not our debt, just to be very clear, but it does support local healthcare investments. So the resolution before you today is an issuance of Allen County, Ohio for bond secure Mercy Health. So in this instance, Mercy is issuing roughly $942 million in bonds, roughly 30% of which are improvements to facilities in Hamilton County. So when bonds benefit healthcare facilities located in our county, other than the issuing one, we are required, the board is required to take action on that. So again, this is not our debt. And the next many items are under job and family services. So item number nine is a report of actions for bid awards and contracts for the month of November and December. Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing the use of credit cards for JFS in the amount of $36,000. Item number 11 is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with domestic relations on behalf of JFS. This is for reimbursement of costs for domestic relations magistrate hearings to enforce child support cases referred from JFS. That's in the amount of $223,124.98. Item 12 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the prosecutor's office, again, to reimburse costs for attorneys working on criminal non-support cases in the amount of $178,454. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Bunker Hill Haven for Boys for Group Home Services in the amount of $200,000. Item 14 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Mayo Home for Youth Development for Group Home Services for $500,000. Item 15 is a resolution authorizing a single source agreement with Antoinette Nursing Service, again, for Group Home Services for $465,375. Item 16 is a resolution authorizing renewal two with NECO for Family Placement Services for $5.4 million. Item 17 is a resolution authorizing a contract with Lighthouse Youth Services for youth enhanced services in the amount of $647,747. Item 18 is a resolution authorizing renewal number two of the single source agreement with Care Youth Corporation for Residential Treatment Services for $160,000. Item 19 is a resolution authorizing renewal number two with the agreement with Cincinnati Children's Medical Center for Nursing Consultation Services in the amount of 1.1 million. Item 20 is a resolution authorizing renewal number two of the agreement with National Youth Advocate Program for Family Placement Services in the amount of 5.4 million. Item 21, a resolution authorizing renewal two with Children's Hospital for Placement Medical Screening Services for $186,806. Item 22 is a renewal number one of the single source agreement with Rite of Passage, operating a residential care facility, Desert Lily, for residential treatment services in the amount of $230,767. Item 23 is a resolution authorizing renewal two with specialized alternatives for families and youth of Ohio for family placement services in the amount of $2 million. Item 24 is a resolution authorizing renewal two of the original agreement with United Methodist Children's Home Family Services for Family Placement Services for $73,706. And item 25 is requesting authorization to travel for the coroner for one employee to Milwaukee, Wisconsin for the Midwest Association of Toxicology and Therapeutic Drug Monitoring Conference. That's the consent agenda. It's a long one with JFS and I know John Nelson is here and I think Laura Wolf is online if there's specific questions about JFS, but happy to take any other questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Holly. I also want to point out that Reginald Staples is here from Dinsmore and Shoal. If we have any questions related to the hospital piece, we'll bring you forward to answer those questions. Thank you for being here. I wanted to bring John forward, John Nelson. We have over $16 million of allocation here for kids in this community. And I, you know, we talked about this a little bit last night in the state of the county. The need is increasing, the complexity of the cases for these kids is increasing. And so the dollar amounts that we need to spend to secure and stabilize these children and their families is increasing. And so I just want to note it, and if you wouldn't mind providing some perspective on that, because we always have a multitude of JFS items on our agenda and it's important work that you are doing and we, we support this, but these dollar amounts are increasing. And I was hoping that you could just speak to that, not only by way of what this represents, but if we are, if we should anticipate this kind of spending in the future. I know it's necessary and I'm certainly not criticizing. In fact, I'm being very supportive, but it is striking and I just want to better understand what's going on.
Commissioner Drehouse, thank you. It really is a staggering number that we're seeing as well in terms of what is costing to place our children in care. And I think there's a couple of drivers. One, of course, I think is that, I think was spoken about in this meeting earlier, is just how everything costs more. And I think a lot of our care providers are also seeing the cost of, you know, just hiring people as well as just taking care of kids going up. And so as part of that, that cost gets passed on to JFS because it is costing a lot more to take care of children. But again, we're also seeing our youth like, like never before when it comes to the amount of trauma that they're facing. And so when we, when we pick care for them, we're picking trauma-informed care, we're providing them with the mental health services that they're in need as well, apart from just their placement as well. And so that really increases the cost of care as well as we provide all the additional mental health support, but also the wraparound care for the children in our care.
Thank you. Maybe for my benefit, I don't know about my colleagues, I'm sure it's true of both of them as well, I think it might be helpful for us to see, I remember a chart from a number of years ago where we actually were stabilizing by way of how many kids were coming into care through JFS. And it sounds like that is no longer the case and those numbers are going up. So could you provide us, or maybe commissioners, I don't know what you think about this, maybe it's a staff report about what's going on because this, I think, is one of the very important issues that we are facing in this community. We're hearing it from, by way of the mental health piece, by way of the addiction piece, you know, the destabilization of families then playing out in the safety of the kids. And so maybe it's a staff report about the trends, not only the kids coming into care, which my understanding is it's increasing, but the complexity of the issues that are driving this. And I'd be curious to know, but not, I don't, you probably don't have this today, but by way of percentage, these increases, is it mostly driven by increase in the number of kids or is it mostly driven by the complexities or what you just raised, the providers' cost increasing? And so we have to respond to that as well.
Yeah, President Drehouse, I think most of it is actually driven by the cost of care. The number of kids coming into care has about stabilized, as you mentioned. So we're seeing a certain level of stabilization in the kids coming in, but their needs are much higher than we've ever seen before. And that's what is driving most of the cost around it.
Okay, thank you very much.
But we'll be happy to provide that.
Well, I'll get, I'll get back to you, but thank you very much. It's really helpful to hear that perspective. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Thank you. Thank you. I had a, just wanted to speak to you about the same issue that, that came up, but I'm thinking about the service providers and their trauma, that we don't know what's going to happen with Medicare. Some of them, some of them are working and they may not be working. So they're just trying to take care of these young people and thinking about what do they have to face? And I don't see the costs going down anytime soon because, as you were saying, if they have a home service and they have to, they want to cook some eggs every now and then for their young people. So we hope that we see something different, but I don't see it anytime soon. We just need to make sure that we keep our providers in the front of our mind and how can we help them to cope? And I know you guys are too. And I also wanted to give a compliment to JFS because initially years ago, I was asking about the summary that I needed to know about what JFS was doing. And so you guys are, the summary is great that you sent out. So I'm really referring to items nine through 24. And so I always wanted to know the location of where our young people were going, the services provided, how many young people, whether or not it was a renewal or not. And I know we're trying very hard to keep the young people here if we can. We may have to send them out of state or into another city, but your summaries are just excellent. It really takes away any questions that I might have as it relates to what we're doing and why we're doing and why the cost is so much. So I just wanted to compliment you and all of your staff, all of Mike's staff who put that summary together is excellent.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas. Credit goes to Laura Wolf and her contracting team. They do a fantastic job.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
No, I just echo what you all said and I think it would be good for the citizens to kind of see, like you said, the needs, you know, have changed and are more drastic, but also looking at like what grants have been cut and how that will possibly affect. I know we're going to get a report from how these federal, what federal grants are going where and how that might affect us being able to, you all to be effectively to serve the children. So I think that would be good to have as well.
Yeah, so why don't we go, is my staff in the room? I can't believe, it's hard for me to, there we go. Yeah, let's schedule a staff meeting, maybe a few weeks out and make sure that you understand we want kind of a comprehensive report back to kind of the state of things at JFS really related to the grants, related to the number of kids, related to their needs, all the things. So we will look forward to having that and we'll schedule that through. Thank you so much, John, really appreciate it.
One other thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Is Laura on the phone? Because I always ask her questions, but you were saying thanks to Laura. So thank you, Laura. I'm not asking you a question. Thank you for answering.
You're very welcome. My team works very hard to try and meet all the expectations of our families and young people. And I appreciate the shout out regarding the synopsis. My team works very hard to get you that info so you can make informed decisions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, any other questions regarding the consent agenda, Commissioner Summer Dumas?
No.
Commissioner Reese? Okay, all right, I'm going to make a motion to approve or receive for the record items three through 25.
Second, Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes, thank you. If there's nothing more, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes, thank you.